Okay.
That's why I love it.
I'm so used to city councils. Council chambers. We're calling this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting. We're in the Mon County Commission, 243 High Street Building. And it is Wednesday, June 21st at a little bit after 7:00 PM. We're calling the meeting to order and we're asking our clerk if she would please call the roll.
Joe Abuganam.
President.
Bill Kawecki.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull.
Here.
Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
And Mayor Celine.
Here.
And now we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're to approval of the minutes. We're starting off with the June 6th, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes and then June 6th, 2023 Regular Meeting Minutes. And if there are no additions or corrections, we'll approve them by proclamation, yes? Okay? And now we're on to correspondence. And now that we're starting with a presentation, which is an ordinance amending Section 1323, Table 1331.05.01, and Table 1365.04.01, as it relates to establishing a new firearm sales establishment's use planning and zoning code. And who is making our presentation?
Mayor, I can describe the ordinance and recommendations from the Planning Commission. This evening Development Services Director Ricky Jaeger is out at a conference. He will be available for council's first July meeting where if you move this proposal forward, you will have first reading of the ordinance. So if you'd like more information about the Planning Commission proceedings or any kind of planning guidance on that, he'll be available then to provide it. So this action is based on a petition for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, originally submitted in June 2022, proposing to create a use classification for firearm sales establishments. Those stores that sell or lease or manufacture or repair firearms. The Planning Commission held its required public hearing on the petition and asked staff for additional information, as well as the applicant ultimately held two workshops to gather that information and seek a revised proposal from planning staff as well as the applicant. That was ultimately presented to the Planning Commission at its May 11th meeting and unanimously forwarded to council this evening as a recommended change to the zoning ordinance. The ordinance in front of council this evening establishes a new use classification for firearm sales establishments and would permit those establishments in the B5, the shopping center district, and permit them as a conditional use in the B2 service business district. There is a definition of those establishments. It's any operation that sells firearms, as well as lease, repair, and manufacture, as mentioned. And it applies to stores that also conduct other business. So previously, these generally would have been classified as a retail use or a sporting goods use. The definition of firearm tracks state code. It excludes weapons that expel projectiles by other than explosive means, such as air guns, for instance. And it excludes antique firearms, which the state code also excludes. Let's see. I think that covers the territory of the ordinance and the history of the Planning Commission proceedings. This is a sort of presentation of this ordinance in lieu of a committee of the whole meeting. The documents weren't available from the Planning Commission in time for your May Committee of the Whole. And because there's no June Committee of the Whole, council has to hear a summary of the action tonight. And so the Planning Commission and staff recommends that you would move this to your next agenda, your July 5th meeting, for consideration on first reading. If you do have questions about the ordinance text, I'm happy to address those or to confer with Development Services staff and get you more information for your next meeting.
I guess we could also ask our representatives of Planning Commission if you have anything to add.
I think Attorney Simonton gave a good rundown of the proceedings. We wanted to, we as a Planning Commission, wanted to make sure of two things, I guess. One, we did not want to get involved with any current happenings of ongoing battles with already established businesses and locations. And we also wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence. And we looked at code from many other places, even within the state of West Virginia. We looked at many different definitions. We went through many different iterations of maps of possible different allowed areas. We looked at an option of within, not allowing it within so many feet of a gathering place, like a school or a church. We looked at doing it by current zone. We essentially, and eventually, it's been in works for a year now, which is longer than a lot wanted it to take. But again, we wanted to make sure that we were not putting any undue influence on the little issue that was happening around this time last year. And we think what we came up with and the definitions and the conditions seem to be appropriate. I will remind everyone, our land use table has dozens and dozens and dozens of uses. We tell people which zones they're allowed to have a bakery or a greenhouse or a dog sitting business. So this is very consistent with what we're already doing. And I think that the areas that we came up with are the most appropriate throughout the city. So if there's any other questions about any of the happenings of the Planning Commission, I'm happy to answer that. But we did forward it along at our May meeting unanimously.
Great. So does anyone have any questions of our attorney? Yes.
Other communities, cities that might have a similar type of ordinance? I just wondered where those might be.
Charleston and Huntington both have a use classification with a similar definition and allow these uses in two or three zones, sometimes with a conditional use component. So similar to what was proposed before you here. Planning staff in the Planning Commission, I think, also looked at ordinances in a couple cities in California, Massachusetts, and another state. So these use classifications are fairly common.
Anyone else? And I guess we should also ask that at the next meeting, we have whatever presentation that the planner would provide, just to augment your fine description this evening. I guess, I think that the key thing here is that we are allowing these uses in a significant number of places in the city. And as noted, this isn't much different than any other requirement. So.
Can I add one? Also important to note that anything that is currently operating, such as a pawn shop in a neighborhood, something like that, they will be grandfathered in and be continued to allow to operate. This will not do away with any current business.
Great. So any other questions or we will call the question? All right. There's clerk, if you would call the roll. Are we just moving consensus to move to an agenda?
I'm so wired on this.
Sorry. This is in lieu of having a committee of the whole. And thus, we're going to just forward it on.
Move to the agenda. Forward it on to the agenda?
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're forwarding on to the agenda. You don't need to call any roll.
Thank you. All right. Now we have a series of public hearings. These public hearings are an opportunity for people to come to the podium and come to the podium and speak on these particular topics. If you're wanting to speak on a general topic, there will be a public portion, which comes pretty soon thereafter. So these are specific public hearings. An ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. We're going to start this public hearing. So this is only on this one specific topic. And if anyone wants to speak, you can come to the podium. Okay, we're going to close this. Then we're going to have an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Acme Land Holdings LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. So if anyone's wishing to speak on this topic, this is your opportunity. We're opening a public hearing. And we're closing the public hearing. And then we have an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Met Billiards LLC at the Metropolitan Theater. We're going to open this public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic? And we have an ordinance amending Article 1718 entitled vacant structure code. We're going to open this one. And we're going to close it. Item E, an ordinance adopting the fee schedule of the city of Morgantown. Going to open this one. And we're going to close it. Item F, an ordinance authorizing a real estate purchase agreement with James L. Larita, Senior Family Limited Partnership. This is purchase of a piece of property at the airport. We're going to open this one. Then we're going to close it. Is anyone wishing to speak? All right. Unfinished business. First item is a consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a real estate purchase agreement with James L. Larita, Senior Family Limited Partnership. So this is an item for consideration by city council. Is there, I don't know if the city manager would like to speak on this or if our airport director would. And I can work on speaking up. I can see that you're not hearing me, sorry. All right. We've covered this at our last meeting, but it's good for people to have heard the brief summary of what this property means to the airport.
Sure, absolutely. Be happy to discuss again. So the purchase of this property is approximately 105 acres of land. This is primarily for the future development of the airport, next runway extension after we complete the one we're working on, and some aviation development and commerce around the airport. So it's the future of our airport, helping to grow our community and bringing more business to Morgantown.
All right.
Anything else?
Does anyone have any questions that you've thought about since we discussed it the first time? All right. You must have done a good job the first time.
Guess so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Clerk.
Does he need a motion?
Oh, good point.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Keep me in line. All right. Now that we've made our motion, is there any more discussion? And then we will have the clerk call the roll. All right. If you would please call the roll.
Joe Abuganam.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. And now we're on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. So if someone's wishing to speak, this is your moment. You would come to the podium, you would have four minutes, and you would be able to discuss any topic at this time, as long as it's related somehow to city business. So we're going to open this public portion. And you can come to the podium if you're wishing to speak. You'd state your name and where you live.
Yes, the name is Cee Latell Hall, and I live at 1053 Ross Street. And this is regarding the matter that you all just voted on here just a minute or two ago concerning the airport. I've been coming in and out of Morgantown from Charleston, beginning in mid-sixties and whatever. Transferred here as a sophomore in 1969 to go to WVU. But in any event, I've been in and out of Morgantown Airport commercially. I've chartered a number of flights in and out of town on business and other things, my family and my own personal business or whatever. And as we speak here tonight, as many of you know, we have 5,199 feet, I believe. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The expected expansion, extension of the runway would go to, I believe, 6,200 feet. Is that correct? Am I thinking right? Which we very, very dearly need, ladies and gentlemen. If we're going to compete with the likes of our neighbors and competitors down in Clarksburg at the Benetton Airport, they started out for a long time at 7,000 feet. And then they had a 400 feet increase and another 400 feet. 7,800 feet. Look around the country. We're in the devil. Do we have 7,800 feet in a lot of, you know, airports around the country? So we're in competition. What we need to do is continue on the path that you, ladies and gentlemen, laid out here tonight. And I commend you and with Director Brable, let's move forward. Let's, with haste, and get that airport extended and improved and whatever. Good to see you again. Thank you very much and keep up good work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We're going to close this. Now we're on to the consent agenda. We're going to go through the items in the consent agenda. And at the end, if there's any item that someone would like to take separately, you're welcome to pull it out. But otherwise, we vote on this as a whole. So here we go. Consent agenda. Item A, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. The first reading was 6/6/2023. Item B, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Acme Land Holdings LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. The first reading was 6/6/2023. Item C, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Met Billiards LLC at the Metropolitan Theater. The first reading was 6/6/2023. Item D, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending Article 1718 entitled vacant structure code. The first reading was 6/6/2023. Item E, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance adopting the fee schedule of the city of Morgantown. First reading was 6/6/2023. So now I'm going to hesitate for a moment and then I'm going to ask for motion. Move to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Thank you. So clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Joe Abuganam.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. And now we're on to new business. Item A, consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached hereto, made a part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the coal severance fund. Let's see. Is there, who is up on that one?
I could address that.
All right.
I thought our finance director would be here, but that's fine.
Yeah.
I know that he's been having some issues at home with aging parents. So we're glad to fill in. At the end of each fiscal year, there's some adjustments that need to be made in order to accommodate any carryovers and adjustments that need to be made to address any budget items that were not spent or that were overspent. As I reviewed the budget, I saw very few items that were overspent. And so I think the Finance Department's done a great job in managing the budget. Our department heads have done a great job holding the budget down. And as such, there's a good deal of carryover that's going to occur after the first of the year, that we'll come back to council for further approval and reallocation. That's just, it's a normal, it's a normal part of the process. And our recommendation is that it be approved by council. You should have had opportunities to look at all the increases. It addresses increases and decreases in budgets and where it's going to be allocated. Shouldn't be very, it's not very complicated at all. Our recommendation is that it be approved.
All right. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. And then are there any questions?
This one is just the coal severance fund.
Yep.
How convenient, the Director Wiles is here and most of that money goes to Parks and Recreation. So now she will know to submit her request for that after council approves it.
Bingo. All right. If there aren't any questions, then we'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Abuganam.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. And we have consideration of approval of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget for the city of Morgantown Airport Improvement Fund. And I bet I know who we could speak to about this item. Thank you, John Brable.
So the Airport Improvement Fund is basically all the grants we received from the FAA and also our capital contributions towards that work. So when you look at the budget we have this year, it includes a number of grants that we've received and are currently spending down. And it's also our capital contributions for our local matches. Any questions about that?
Is the new hangar, is it part of this?
No. That is completely being funded by a third party.
Okay. I know Emily is out. If you need assistance with water sewer, let me know, please.
Will do. That process has started. So hopefully, we're going in the right direction now.
Okay.
And we are looking for a grant to help pay for that as well, so.
All right. Any other questions? We have had a motion, right? We haven't had a motion yet. All right. Motion, please. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Unless there's any further discussion, if you please call the roll.
Joe Abuganam.
Yes.
Bill Kawecki.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Brian Butcher.
Yes.
And Mayor Celine.
Yes, passes unanimously. And now we're on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. There have been a couple of really productive meetings that we've held. One was last Thursday. Several of us met with the public regarding concerns that council had addressed with the medical, the requirement for medical certification that one... the medical, the requirement for medical certification that one was qualified to receive the smaller carts. Republic was really open to working with us. And right now, staff is working on a list of additional criteria that, in addition to an individual can use a medical excuse if necessary, but additional possible rationale for an individual being able to ask for, including topography, steps, I mean, there are all kinds of, we're going to identify a variety of items that individuals asking for an exception to the larger containers can make and submit for consideration. One thing that we did learn was that, as in any business, you have to, you have to create an inventory. How many large carts and how many small carts can you order or should we order? And there was no way for Republic to understand how many of each size cart to order. So they ordered a certain number of small carts, which by the way, the vehicles can accommodate in terms of dumping, which was a big, big concern of mine. And so either size cart is, the vehicles can receive. So once we get, they were willing to consider changing their inventory. That's not an easy thing for a company to do. You know, they're taking a risk by having a large inventory left of large carts, depending on how many individuals order the smaller carts. But I think what we'll find when this is all said and done, and we have a two-week timeline in which to come up with these alternate, for staff to come up with these alternate options with input from Republic. Once that's done, what we'll do is we'll, I'd like to discuss that with City Council, just so you're aware of what those options are. And I think what we'll find is it'll make it much easier for individuals that are truly in need to be able to receive the smaller carts. And that was our aim anyway. So that was a very positive meeting. Also have continued to receive from just a whole different, I was talking to a business owner this morning that has been a longtime business owner in the downtown area on High Street. And we were talking about something else and he initiated the discussion about, he walks High Street every day. And he commented about how clean it is, that the garbage is, I mean, certainly there's still trash, but much, much reduced. And that the other concerns for safety in the downtown have improved. And I think that the efforts that the city and individual property owners have made in power washing, in cleaning exterior, in trying to keep the garbage up, there's been a concerted effort in addition to the presence of additional law enforcement in the downtown. So not, this individual surprised me because he initiated that conversation. Most of the time I'm asking individuals, well, how's it going? And then I get a report that in most cases, I can't say all cases, but in most cases, things are improved. They're not perfect and there's a lot of work to be done, but we, I'm hopeful that we're going in the right direction. Finally, had a long meeting with the police chief. We're, this is an interesting dilemma because it requires volunteer, City staff to volunteer, and that is the manning of public events on public right of way, such as parades, runs, walks, festivals and so forth. And it was an eye-opener for me, in order to maintain public safety, how many officers were required? So when somebody, when a group says, we want to walk down High Street, that's an extensive proposition. It's not something that, you've got multiple intersections that have to be secured to secure the public safety. And so with that as backdrop, there has been a, some hesitancy for some of our police officers to volunteer to serve on that detail. And part of it is giving up their evenings and giving up holidays and things like that. So we're working on some options that I think in the end will prove to be able to balance out what we can do with the department and use other resources to be able to manage. I can tell you that several of the larger events are sponsored by other organizations who are in some ways much more flush with money than the city is. And it's my intent to solicit their support, if in fact they want to continue doing certain events in the downtown and requiring our public safety, that they're going to have to participate in the cost of it and in just the support of it. And so you'll hear a little bit of that, that we're expecting that, but I think it's the right thing to do. And I'm hoping that with all of that balanced out, we can move forward in a positive way. I've authorized overtime, for instance, that's one of the reasons, excuses for not being able to get enough staff to support, but I've authorized overtime for the major events that we're talking about. That's all I have to report this time. Thank you.
Thank you. A report from the City Clerk.
I have nothing.
Thank you for serving, Heather. This is Heather Carl, our deputy?
Yeah, can I just say that Heather is doing a great job filling in for our City Clerk. Hasn't missed a beat, so we're thrilled with what she's doing for us.
Well done.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I received from the City Clerk's office today the draft Student Resource Officer and Prevention Resource Officer contracts for the upcoming school year, so we'll review those. And I forwarded them on to Finance as well to confirm the reimbursement rates. And we'll review those and have them on a forthcoming council agenda. I also received some proposals for changes to the Police Civil Service Commission rules from the commission, and we'll be looking at those and expect to likely have those on your second July meeting. I think lastly, I attended the Steering Committee meeting yesterday for the comprehensive plan, which some of you also attended. The consultant and the working group look like they are pretty far along and looking at drilling down on their priorities in the comprehensive plan goals. And hopefully that will be before the Planning Commission and then council as well very soon. And then staff, Planning Commission and council can begin working on the zoning changes that will come along with that planning process that's been going on for about a year now. And that is all I have to report this evening.
Thank you. Report from council members. Councilor Abugonam, would you like to start?
Sure. I got the opportunity after our last meeting to take part in the RSA flight lesson at our Morgantown Airport. And it was fantastic outside of the part where I was doing 45-degree turns and flying too high and then spiraling down, so there was a lot of nausea involved in that. But it was an absolutely awesome experience. I encourage anyone to try it, assuming you're not afraid of heights or small spaces. We have our first, or not our first, we have our next Neighborhood First Ward Association meeting this Monday at Jack Roberts Park. That will be at 6 o'clock. And Tree Board meets on Monday as well at 4:30. And also I've heard a lot of really great things, short of the weather, when it comes to our, everyone's experiences with our downtown summer concert series. And I believe that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilor Kewke.
Very good, thank you. I had the pleasure of receiving the awards that we had recently been presented from the Historic Preservation people down in West Virginia. These are it. Excuse me, put those up and block my camera angle. Block shows. It was the Community Preservation Award. It was awarded to the Morgantown Historic Landmarks Commission and Main Street Morgantown. It was a very, very pleasant trip and a very interesting visit to the city of Lewisburg, who's doing some very nice things too. Very eye-opening and a good group of people and a good group of people to be associated with and helpful.
I'm good either way.
Two other items I have, in terms of Republic. I appreciate what we're trying to do and I appreciate that they're cooperative with us. The idea of having these cans now presented to each, I guess, participant, everybody who signs on to receive this service, gives us the capability now of identifying the garbage cans, which are, as our mayor pointed out in last meeting, identified with numbers on the back. It seems to be a very advantageous situation in that we can identify, our code enforcement people can identify these people who are making bad use of the cans or leaving them too long, blocking facilities, or not properly caring for them. And not having to chase around the neighborhood trying to figure out who's doing this and trying to catch them when they're home in order to present them with appropriate warnings. I would suggest that we look into that. And I would also encourage that, one way or another, we give the people who are using these cans, the size cans, that they will use. We need to find a way of supplementing that if necessary. That's a service that I think is very appropriate, so I would encourage that. And then lastly, I understand that the gas company is finally coming to an end down on downtown area, ripping up the streets. And I was just wondering whether or not, and I know that they have committed to the idea of repaving, I'm just wondering if we have a timeline on when that repaving might be accomplished?
I don't feel, I'll find out from Damian tomorrow, send an email out.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Mayor.
The mayor would like me to announce, there will be Frank Scafella, who is a former counselor, currently has an art show at the Wild Hill Community Center, and there will be a closing reception for that show Friday, June 30th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's free. There's usually some snacks around. It's a good time. I missed the opening, so I actually have the closing on my calendar.
It's a good show.
I attended so many events, I won't talk about them all because I was out and about all weekend, but I will mention that Hazel's House of Hope had our open house yesterday afternoon. Several members of City Council and County Commission and several state senators. We had a lot of good representation. We had a lot of community members come out, so I just wanted to say thank you to those of you that came and to the public. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about that facility at any time. I think there's a lot of misconceptions or some perception going around that is not entirely accurate, so I'm happy to show anyone anytime and talk about it. I would like to thank City Staff, the manager, the, I mentioned at the last meeting, some traffic concerns in the Woodburn neighborhood and asked the manager for assistance in getting in touch with engineering. And one of our staff engineers did come and met with myself and some of the neighbors and came up with a few ideas and plans I think that we are going to try out. One of our police officers actually came and set up in the neighborhood the other night and he pulled, every time he got set again, he stopped someone else for speeding. I think in 45 minutes, he pulled over seven or eight people from the same area and that was as many as he could have physically pulled over in that amount of time. So we were very happy to see that that's being taken seriously because there has been personal property damage many times so far this year and it's going to result in some bodily harm, I fear. So good to get that taken a look at. I'm happy to hear that the trash carts are being solved. However, I am still receiving a lot of reports and I forwarded another along to Carol and one of the contacts at Republic. Things that I mentioned at our meeting two weeks ago that I worked with staff to get addressed happened again this week. So I continue to forward those concerns and hopefully we can get the missed pickups and the early pickups and things like that addressed with Republic.
Can I ask a question? One of the concerns was that some of the pickups were way early in the morning. Is that, because we brought that concern up to Republic, has that slowed down any feedback on that?
I sent Carol and Cassie at Republic a picture from my security camera. One of my neighbors alerted me, so I took a screenshot from my security camera at 5:40 yesterday morning. And that was as they were coming up and out of the neighborhood. They were going the wrong way on my street. It did not indicate that they were just entering. They were, they were coming from the more dense part of the neighborhood.
Excuse me, but my last pickup was at 3:51.
At what?
Morning.
I've heard from a lady in Seventh Ward that hers is consistently at 4 a.m. I also received some concerns this week that the restrooms at Hazel Ruby McQuain Park were not opened on Monday and Tuesday, I'm certain due to the holiday. But having served on the boat park board for the last five or six years, I can tell you those holidays are when parks and amenities are used the most. And I can guarantee you the pools and the facilities and the boat park system were open. So I would like to see us make sure that we are much more consistent. It was a beautiful day on Monday, a lot of people were out and the restrooms were closed. I was not sure if I was going to bring this up, but when the city manager said that a downtown business owner had stopped him to say how much better things seem to be getting and how clean things are, I'm kind of dumbfounded because I don't understand if we're looking at the same downtown. I don't want to make anyone feel unsafe or unwelcome in downtown, and that is definitely never my intention. However, sticking our head in the sand and pretending like we don't have issues is not the method to remedy things either. We have done some cleanup. We have, we have a foot patrol occasionally down there, but I think nine out of 10 or more people, except for whoever you've talked to apparently, would tell you that things aren't necessarily improving. And I don't want anyone to think that that's because we don't see it or we're ignoring it. I myself have personally asked for management to look into having code enforcement on the weekends, because when there's trash set out along the street on Saturdays and Sundays, it gets torn into and then we have trash up and down the streets instead of just in the cans there. We have a lot of code enforcement issues. I've also personally asked, and I know other members of council have, for administration to work with the police department. We need a 24-hour police presence downtown. There is no two ways about that. Once in, one walk, once an hour. Once in, one walk, once an hour for ten or twelve hours, excuse me, of the day, just doesn't seem to be cutting it. They know whoever is doing unsavory activities knows that after they see that officer walk by, they are good for at least an hour and he is not going to walk by the same area the next time. I just, I can't fathom the way that business owners must feel that we're, we're hanging them out to dry and making things their issues. I cannot fathom that our code enforcement is writing tickets and citations to property owners for graffiti on their building, graffiti that they obviously did not do and that they are working to remove at their own expense while we, we seem to be ignoring so many of our other issues that are happening. So I guess I just, I want to make sure that we have eyes on it and that these things are happening and I hear a lot of people say that the police department, their, their hands are being tied by council and I don't believe that to be true. The mayor and I, less than a year ago, walked through downtown with, um, our director of code enforcement and the chief of police and the city management and we said, "These are the kinds of issues that need to be dealt with. If these are, if, if you don't have the right tools in order to be able to deal with them, please tell us what you need us to do." And that was never brought, brought to us, nothing, no changes were suggested. I don't know if the chief of police or the deputy chief would be open to a meeting between some members of council and administration to talk about why there seems to be a lack of enforcement. I, I want to be perfectly clear, being homeless is not a crime and people being on the street is not a crime. A lot of the activities that we are seeing are crimes. There, there is open drug use, there is occasional, you know, we'll kindly call it indecent exposure. Um, but, but there are issues and if the Morgantown Police Department needs different or better tools in order to be able to deal with those things, they need to bring those to us and let us know what they are, because I don't know what the answer is. I am not an attorney, I am not a member of law enforcement, but I am willing to talk to those people and listen to their recommendations and, and help them in any way that my current position would allow me to help them. So I just want to put that out there. It's not that I'm not listening to business owners, it's not that I'm doing nothing. I, I am not allowed to direct city staff. I think that's all I have.
Councilor Ashburger?
Yes, mayor. Um, I'm, I'm really sorry I was not able to attend the open house for the Hazel House of Hope. I was not able to, to break away to, to do that, but it is a very important resource for our community that I fully support and hope to be able to take a tour or less formally or however that might work in the future. Deputy mayor, please let me know, I'd love to do so. Uh, I'd also like to thank the planning commission for bringing forth a very thoughtful ordinance regarding the sales of firearms. I appreciate that, that's been in the works for a while. And I would like to report that from the rail trail, the Mon River Rail Trail Conservancy, that the Collins Ferry Connector from Suncrest down to the trail is open and it's about a quarter mile in length and we do have a few more amenities to add such as parking stops for about eight to ten cars that will be able to accommodate there, but the trail is open and we will have a ribbon cutting once the trail is officially complete with its amenities. There is a South Hills Neighborhood Gathering tomorrow from five to seven with a food truck and a meeting to follow. We have a rain location at the Puritan House, which is, or the Quaker House, which is at East Brockway. Hopefully, hopefully good weather and the Greenmont Neighborhood Association is having their annual block party Saturday, June twenty-fourth, on the Arch Street Islands beginning at five. So some fun neighborhood activities occurring and that, that is all I have, mayor.
Thanks. Councilor Butcher?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, the Morgantown Pride Block Party is this Saturday, um, from twelve to six at the Hazel Ruby McQuain Amphitheater. Anybody that would like to attend, please come, it's a free event. Um, there's like thirty-two vendors that'll be out there, some nonprofits just kind of sharing information, some people selling, um, any number of things, um, food trucks, all kinds of fun stuff, bands. So yeah, come down and, um, support this Saturday. In terms of our ongoing trash saga, um, I have received communication from people saying that they haven't even received their application to turn in their doctor's notes, um, and it's been pretty much-
Have they requested it?
Yes, and it's been a month almost, um, since they have requested it. Not that I think that they should have to turn in the doctor's note, um, but yeah. I have not experienced, uh, early trash pickup on, on my street, but, um, and nor have I, uh, heard those complaints in my words, but, in my word, but I understand that it is a problem in other parts of, of the city. Um, I did want to also report that, um, I don't think any of our plants died, uh, at the Sun, at the Suncrest Mini Park. They all look very nice. Um, now, thanks to a lot of diligent watering, I think from a lot of people, uh, within the neighborhood, um, we had, right after we planted, a very long dry spell and now we're in a very wet, uh, time of the year apparently. Um, so, but they all look great, um, and so I appreciate everybody coming down to help make that a success. I think, uh, the last thing I wanted to, um, kind of bring up because I guess it's been brought up twice now and it was something I heard over, I've heard several times, honestly, is that, um, I've heard from many people in the downtown area and the Wharf District, several places, that have been, that have accounts of being told directly from officers that they are not allowed to enforce the laws because city council does not allow them to, which is, um, I mean, you hear that and it's patently absurd on its face, but the first couple of times I heard it, I thought, "Well, that must be a miscommunication." And now I've heard it for like a year straight from several different people and just heard it again this past weekend. So I don't know what that breakdown in communication is. I have, uh, my suspicions, but it just, um, that's not an acceptable way to like be responding to our community members when they have concerns, um, nor is it true. We don't direct police officers at all and nor would we direct them to allow people to break the law. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad that those of you that happen to live closer to Turtle Park did, uh, such a yeoman's job of watering and that now, uh, the powers that be chose to let the rain fall and, and city council doesn't control that either. Um, really? I thought you did the rain dance. We tried, but it didn't work, so we gave up after a while and, and anyway, yeah, so please do thank the neighbors who were watering, because that makes a big difference to limp along to when we get some actual rainfall. Super appreciated the multiple tours of Hazel's House of Hope and, um, it just is complete night and day difference from when it started a couple of years ago. Also appreciated the planning, um, steering committee for the comprehensive plan and all the work that's gone into it and there will be more, um, public meetings and it'll come back to the planning commission as well. Met today with student government president and there's lots of good ideas for the coming year about activities and, um, ways that we can collaborate. And they seem much more organized than, um, student governments of the recent past who have all had certain things that they did and didn't do, but, um, this particular group seems to be, um, very well organized. So you'll hear more about that as things get developed. One thing that really helps with dealing with the garbage issue is when your neighbors or customers of Republic want to contact them, if they can use the information that's on the can. So there's a graphic and there's a Q R code, there's also a, um, a phone number and there's also a, uh, email address. Maybe it's a website address, actually, but anyway, there's three different things on the can that you can use to contact them. If you use those, you get the local, um, service and they've created that for us. If you use the national numbers or if a customer uses the national numbers, you'll get more generic information and be, I think, less satisfied. And then if all that breaks down and you really have a sticky problem, um, call Carol. And much appreciation to Carol and her professionalism in dealing with some of these, some of these Think of what else we were gonna, yeah. Appreciate the, um, looking at the art exhibition and it includes Frank Scifella's photographs and paintings and drawings. Um, he's a multi-talented fellow and also tells good stories, so it's totally worth coming when he's there, so, um, please do that. And I have a few flyers that maybe people would be willing to put up in their particular neighborhoods or hand to people who they know are active in their community to get more people there. There's also a dedication of the Deborah Palmer Gallery, uh, and that's the twenty-ninth, um, which is a Saturday from three to six P M., same location, um, at the Wiles Hill Community Center, which I just saw the flyer today, so.
What day?
Yeah. See? Take one. But if people-
July.
Twenty-ninth.
Oh, July.
I was like, wait, the thirtieth is a Friday. Not June, that doesn't work. July. I'm glad that she can read. Um, so, uh, I think that concludes my comments. Um, I also have noted all of the different conditions that happen in our downtown, but I have seen, uh, certain types of improvement and I know that everyone's working hard on it. So I appreciate all the work that people do and we still have a ways to go to work on the downtown, but the best way that someone can help the downtown is to come down and use it. So for instance, uh, one comment, um, that I happen to see online, which I try to stay offline, but I end up online anyway, um, was someone who had come downtown on Saturday and had been to all of the different things that were going on, so there was a, um, moonlit market at the end of the day, there was birthday celebration that included kids' activities and beer tasting and a cake, so it pretty much covered the, covered the gamut. Um, so we, we have a lot going on and I, I appreciated, uh, all of the work that went into it from Main Street, from private individuals, from all the people who bothered to come down and set up booths for the day. It really makes a difference in our downtown when there's activity, so anything that you can do to come down and purchase something or come to an arts walk or, um, use any one of our businesses of any type, uh, that makes a difference, because the more that people use the area, the more that we take it for whatever purposes we want it to happen, that we want to happen there. So, um, I just appreciate all the effort that has gone into it and I do think that it is cleaner in many ways, um, because there's been a concerted effort toward doing that and also there are still issues, so there's this, we could do the point, counterpoint for a long time.
It is cleaner and the flowers are beautiful.
Yes, yeah, exactly. So, um, and we should note on the Andrew White Building, the beautiful, beautiful, um, Jamie Lester, uh, mural that's going up and if you haven't seen it, you sort of go down in the area of Sheets and head toward High Street and you will, and you'll find it. So like sort of South High Street, right before the bridge.
Foundry.
At Foundry Street, exactly. By the funeral home. All right. Is there someone who wants to read us into executive session?
I move the pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section six dash nine A, four to nine. We enter executive session to discuss acquisition or development of real estate in the sixth ward.
Second.
Favor? Yeah. All right, we're going into executive session.